I'd like to call this August 11th, 2022 Regular Board of Education Meeting to Order. Mr. Anagostu, would you take the role?
Mrs. Bissell?
Here.
Mrs. Kilbane?
Here.
Mr. Miko?
Here.
Ms. Dochek?
Here.
And Mrs. Howson?
Here.
We are all present. Would you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have three district goals. Our district goals are academic achievement and growth, financial prudence, and community engagement. We measure all of our decisions by those three goals. Next on our agenda is recognition. I turn it over to Dr. Reiba.
Thank you, Mr. Miko. We are very excited for this annual recognition that was started a handful of years ago, so I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Bill Burdick from the Knights of Columbus and Mr. Bill Wengler from Strongsville High School to do the recognitions and honors tonight. Bill and Bill.
My other brother, Bill. So tonight, the other Bill is going to honor Mr. Hayer with an award envelope. Bill, explain who the award is from, the organization, but I just want to speak real quickly about Andy. You know, if you've been to a concert at Strongsville High School, which everybody in this room has, one of the things about Andy, before I became the principal, because I had an older daughter in orchestra, is you get the sense of his passion and love for music, besides the fact that we're the top-rated, one of the top-rated programs every year forever in the state. You can tell when Andy's conducting, when Andy's talking, how intense he is and what high expectations he has. But I got to see Andy on a different side this year. I had the pleasure, or misfortune, depending on your angle, of going on the trip to Disney this year, and I got to spend 650,000 hours on a bus with a bunch of kids. And one of the highlights was getting to know Andy and seeing how much fun and how relatable he is to students. Me, him, and Brian King spent the day together at Disney Studios, one of the studios, and the entire thing was decked out like Star Wars. We're all three Star Wars nerds, which we didn't know beforehand. And, you know, we did everything, we tried everything, and 16 hours later, we were in the parking lot, and the kids had bought these, there was a place where you could make your own lightsabers. And the kids had bought them because me, Andy, and Brian weren't spending $300 on lightsabers. But like a bunch of kids ourselves, we borrowed their lightsabers. And I have several pictures of the three of us having lightsaber fights in the parking lot in the dark, and the kids gathered around laughing, and that's when I realized one of the reasons why, you know, my own daughter is in the orchestra right now and speaks so highly of Andy isn't just that excellence that you see every time you come to a concert. He knows how to adjust and meet kids' needs, whatever those are. And I've learned in my two years, just my respect for him, which already was high, has grown so much higher. So I'm going to let Bill Burdick discuss the actual award, but whatever award he gets, it certainly, he is the most deserving person that I've ever worked with in any music department ever.
Good evening, everybody. I don't need this microphone. You can hear me without this. On behalf of the Knights of Columbus, we're glad to be here tonight because we're doing our annual Sister Rita McHerr Teacher of the Year Award. For the new members of the board, who is Sister Rita? Sister Rita is a saint of a woman, okay? She taught in the city of Strongsville for well over 50 years, okay? Both from the public and the private school system, okay? She was devoted to her faith, she was devoted to her profession in teaching, and she really cared about our greatest gift, our kids, okay? So when we developed the award, who else named the award off of but Sister Rita McHerr, okay? The award is based off of two Strongsville teachers, okay, from Sarire Elementary School. Mrs. Beth Masencik, who I think is teaching first grade still at, because when my kids were there, she was in third grade. And then Mrs. Johnson, who was a second-grade teacher. And those two teachers there always had a commitment to the kids, okay? Whether the kid had a learning disability or a physical disability, they always looked at the ability of the child and to help that child to succeed. So that's why we have the award, to basically thank our teachers for what they do. And as I said, we named it after Sister Rita because of her 50-year commitment to this community and everything like that. So that's just basically a little bit of the history of why we have the award and all that. But tonight, we're recognizing one of our great teachers here, and that's Andy Hayer and everything. You know, over the years, there's been a lot of duels out there, okay? In the entertainment industry, for us older people, everybody remembers Dean Martin, Jerry Lewis, Sonny and Cher, Simon and Garfunkel. For the younger generation, Jay-Z and Beyoncé. For us who drank in the '80s, we had those guys who thanked you for your support, which was Ed Bartles and Frank James of Bartles and James. And for the younger kids, for the SpongeBob generation, who cannot forget Mermaid Man and Barnacle Boy, okay? But in Strongsville, we have our own dynamic duo, and that's Andy Hayer and Brian King, okay? And tonight, we're recognizing Andy Hayer tonight as our Sister Rita McHerr Award winner. But let's look at some of Andy's accomplishments, okay? Our music program is the GOAT in this region, okay? Because we have won nine straight years the National Association of Music Merchant Foundation. The NAMM Foundation celebrates and promotes the intrinsic value of music education. We've seen our kids practice with solo and ensemble every year and score at the highest level. At concert competition, our freshman orchestra, our string orchestra, our chamber and symphony scores excellence. Because it's what Bill brought up, everything that Andy has done as an instructor, as a conductor, as a teacher, as a leader in our music program, dealing with the OMEA, which is the Ohio Music Education Association. Our string orchestra played last year at Severance Hall with the Cavani String Quartet. One of only four schools, one of four schools that were asked to come and play there. That is because of the commitment of the program, that's also because of the commitment of the kids, and also the commitment of our directors and everything. On the school district side, okay, when it was coming down for the election, Andy was here working with us, with the members of SIB, with the levy committee to get the signs out, to get the word out to the parents, to support the levy and everything like that. The kids in the program were out there passing out the signs to get the levy out there. So Andy, besides being a teacher, is looking at the community as well. On the student side, you know, working with Andy and as former president of the instrumental music boosters, when we were getting prepared during the COVID year of 2020, the music program, working with SIB, we donated thermometers to make sure at the marching band camp that we took the temperatures of the students to make sure that if anybody showed signs of a fever, we got them away so we avoided exposures. We made sure we had masks, so if a student's mask would break or had issues with it, we had that for the students. We were always looking at putting the students first, and that was because of the leadership of Andy Hayer. One of Andy's goals over the years was to have a scholarship fund for music education or for a student that wanted to go to a camp but didn't have the money to pay for it. As the music boosters, what we did is, we took his idea, we made it come to fruition, and how to do that. Andy had the dreams, Andy had the goals, we just made it happen, okay? So these are just some of the things that we wanted to let you know about Andy. And there's probably more that we can say that we just don't have time because you've got a meeting tonight. So like I said, on behalf of the Knights of Columbus, we're really pleased to nominate Andy Hayer as our Teacher of the Year Award. So will Bill Wengler and Andy Hayer please come up? Ray Beleki, who's our Grand Knight, he will present the award to Andy Hayer. And then former chief Jeff Brannick, who's our deputy Grand Knight, will be presenting the award to Bill Wengler. So gentlemen, on behalf of the Strongsville Council of the Knights of Columbus, Ray Beleki, Grand Knight, Tim Donovan, District Deputy, we present you the Teacher of the Year Award. And on behalf of the Knights of Columbus, Bill, we present the award to be hung up at the school to show our appreciation for Andy Hayer and his family and their commitment to the city of Strongsville. Congratulations to all. I won't be long, but it's a thank you. I'm truly humbled to be recognized with this honor. It's a blessing and a privilege to work with the exceptional students, parents, colleagues, and the administration here in the Strongsville City Schools. I'm very thankful for all of the support that I've had since the first day I arrived from not only our students and parents, but our booster organization, our community, and again, our administrators and our outstanding colleagues. I also want to thank my family, three of them are here, or two of them are here tonight, for supporting me, because oftentimes, I'm not home. I'm here at a concert, a rehearsal, or contest, and they have been very supportive. So I work with an amazing team of educators and couldn't do it without them. So I'm truly grateful for that. So thank you again for this honor.
So Andy, on behalf of the board, I just want to extend our congratulations to you also and to the Knights of Columbus. Our thanks to them. It's nice that we have a program that recognizes the efforts of all of our teachers, and it's good to remember to do that once a year. What I enjoy doing, whether it's the Christmas concert or anything else, I enjoy, I think it's common to compare our high school orchestra to the Cleveland Orchestra. But what I like to do is compare the Cleveland Orchestra to our high school orchestra. And so the next time anyone in the audience or anyone around is watching a Christmas concert or any of the other concerts, I suggest they close their eyes and just listen and try to determine for themselves where the difference is. But congratulations, you do a great job.
Congratulations, Andy. And before we move on from the recognitions, Mr. Miko, we do have a few young people out here that want to see their mom and dad be recognized a little bit. So at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Jenny Pelco to introduce to the board our recommendation for two new members of our administrative team. Jenny?
Thank you. For your consideration tonight, we have two appointments, and like Cameron said, we have them here in the audience, so definitely want to highlight them. We have two administrative appointments. So first, I'd like to bring up Katie Hawk to the podium. Katie has served, has been with us for a while as a teacher, as a literacy coach, and most recently, our assistant principal at both Kinsner and Maraski Elementary. And to be honest, we've said this a couple times, but when Katie stepped into the role as an assistant principal, she was really ready to be a principal. Under the leadership of Steve Dietrich and Mike Griffin, they really just helped push her and guide her a little bit more, and she is clearly ready to become our principal at Whitney Elementary. She brings a wealth of expertise in curriculum and instruction, and most recently, in her role as assistant principal, has learned all about behaviors and students and working with them. And we just appreciate all of her efforts so far, that she has made such an impact on our kids and in our district, and we're thrilled to have her as the principal of Whitney Elementary. With that, Katie, if you want to say a few words?
Yes, I just, you know, Dr. Reiba, Mrs. Pelco, Strongsville Board members, I just want to thank you for the recommendation on becoming the new principal of Whitney Elementary. It means so much to me, knowing that you have the confidence in me to take on this new position in our district. And Strongsville's near and dear to my heart. You know, it's the city I've grown up in. My parents still live in the same house that I grew up in, and I've spent my whole teaching career here, administrative career, and just have made so many great relationships. And over the last few weeks, I've seen a lot of staff, students, families, and I'm just, I'm so excited and I'm just very eager to get started and continue building on those great relationships this year. So, thank you.
Next, I would like to have Sam Lawrence come up to the podium. If you want to bring your little one, does she want to come with you? She's good? She looks like she wants to follow you. I don't know. So Sam has most recently been in our district as a counselor at Kinsner Elementary, and the impact he's made in just a short time with us is just phenomenal. He just earned the PTA Achievement Award this past spring, and just the amount of support and excitement for Mr. Lawrence at Kinsner has just been overwhelming. The parents and the kids have welcomed him with open arms, and he's done phenomenal work there. So as a result, he is our recommendation to replace Katie Hawk as the assistant principal that will travel between Maraski and Kinsner. And it's just amazing. Sam has also served as a third-grade teacher and a kindergarten teacher in previous districts. And so he does also come with experience in curriculum and instruction, and most recently, in his role as a counselor in SEL programming and working to meet the needs of the whole child. So we're thrilled to have Sam as our new assistant principal for Maraski and Kinsner.
So I just want to thank you for the potential opportunity to become assistant principal for Kinsner and Maraski. I've done a lot of work and seen a lot of different aspects of teaching, as well as school counseling, and I feel like I'm ready to actually take, yeah? Say yeah. I'm ready to take the next step and just really impact the lives of the students in a different way, as well as supporting our educators, helping everybody really, truly getting to that next level. That's a good idea, right? So just thank you for that opportunity, and I'm looking forward to growing with everyone. Thank you.
So again, on behalf of the board, welcome aboard. We're very excited for both of you and the new roles you'll have. We're going to apologize to Kinsner now, because I'm sure they're the ones that will miss you, but you'll just have to visit. And then for the little ones, we do need public comment slips for any comments that they want to make. And that's more for George to translate than anything else. Congratulations and welcome aboard.
And that concludes our recognitions for tonight.
Next on our agenda is public comment. I have no public comment slips. Is there, if there are any last-minute public comments, now is the time. Otherwise, we'll take a brief pause, and it is a very nice day out. So if anybody needs to escape, now is the time to escape. At least one person's smart enough. Next on our agenda is treasurer's report. Mr. Anagostu.
Thank you, Mr. Miko. I have two discussion items for tonight, and then also two items for your consideration. The first discussion item is athletic event ticket and passing pricing. So in front of you, and I put on the board as well, you should have a ticket schedule. The ticket schedule is something we should probably approve annually. We haven't done it in a while. But the single-game tickets and the reserved football ticketing, there has been no price changes and no structure. And most part of the single-game tickets are set by our conference. But in conversations with Denny, and I brought Denny with me, he's going to come up to the podium, we kind of brainstormed, and we were looking at having passes for both a student pass and an adult pass. So Denny, if you want to talk more about those.
Sure. I appreciate the opportunity. So in working with George, you know, and then having looked at what our student attendance was, as well as some of what our adult attendance was, you know, over the course of the last three, four years, I thought an idea to maybe promote more students to want to partake in our athletic events. You know, as we already know, the Booster Club donates $7,500, which allows students to get in for free to any athletic event except for boys' basketball, as well as varsity football. So one way to encourage more students to take advantage of not only that was to look at offering a student pass that is going to cost a student $50, and that's going to get them into every football game, as well as every basketball game. That's a cost savings of $30 over the course of a year. So this pass is going to allow them, typically, we have 11 homeboys' basketball games and five homeboys' varsity football games, so a total of 16 games. With this pass, they're essentially getting six games free. Or, you know, if they don't want to go to every game, as long as they miss six games, they are still getting their value for that pass. So I think it's a great way for us to boost our students to want to come to more basketball games and to really support the other students, as well as the programs out there. Then the additional pass, as I was working with George, was, you know, I wanted to look and see if we could offer a year-round pass for adults. And when we were looking at it, you know, we kind of talked about, you know, with this being right now, with the timing, maybe look at scaling it down and seeing what our passes are going to sell, how many they are going to sell, and then maybe look at doing a year-round pass next year. I've already spoken with the boosters about, you know, if we can include a season pass with a membership. So in order to up the Booster Club memberships, they would also get a year-round pass to attend any sporting event throughout the year. So in this particular thing, it would be a 10-game pass, and then they would additionally get one game free. So adult tickets are $7 at the door, so they would still pay the full $7 for 10 games, but they would get one game free. As you look at a parent that might have a student that plays basketball, if they have 11 home games, they are essentially getting one game free. It's also going to help them save on their fees with credit card fees online, as well as at the gate. Because now, this pass is only going to allow them to charge one fee, instead of getting that fee every single game that they show up and want to buy tickets. So as soon as these passes, you know, if they go through, then that will give us data to look at how many adults actually purchase the passes, and then what that looks like as far as a year-round pass or, you know, just a seasonal pass, but something that we can analyze and use the data to move forward and say, hey, you know, I really think that if we offer these passes at this price point, that it's going to be really, really beneficial for our parents, our students, and for the community. Did I miss anything, George?
No, and just to kind of add on to that, as Denny stated, we started looking at, the conversation started looking at an annual pass. And then as we were starting to look at all the number of games and coming up with a price point, and with the football season tickets already on sale, we decided to kind of give it a year, get more research on it, and get some data where we can kind of come up with a better price point. But in the interim, looking at this year, one of our goals was to, how do we save a parent? Can a parent that has a particular athlete playing one sport, can they buy for that sport their tickets all at once for every single game? So we kind of looked at the 10-game pass, we looked at the number of home games for each individual sport. So we were comfortable with the 10-game pass, and then a few teams that have 11 home games. So with that odd number, that's where we came up with a 10-game pass plus one to also, one, it takes care of that single pass, and also incentivizes to potentially buy the pass, and we would get our revenue upfront as well. So that's another benefit. And then the games that, the teams that have less than 10 games, also looking at opportunity to go support other teams as well. Maybe you have a couple games left, go check out a game that you might not have otherwise seen. So any feedback from the board?
I have two questions. Is this going to be like punch-style card? Like, so for example, I can see myself buying this if I can, my husband and I can both go and take two out of the 10 games, right? Is that how it's going to work? Like we shared, is there going to be specific to one individual person?
No, so it's all going to be digital, online. So if you show up and you want to scan four people in at one game, it'll take four scans, and then, you know, it'll just tell you that you only have six games left to scan.
Great. The only other question?
Just to piggyback off of that, so then, will this be available all year long then? So if you go through your 11 passes?
Correct.
And you have multiple children? Okay.
The other question I had too is just in terms of how comparable the youth student passes are versus the adult. Six games free versus one game free. To me, that's a discrepancy. If you have any thoughts on why only one free for the adults, but six free for the students?
When we were looking at it, for the goal with the adult pass, we were just looking at it in a sense of charging the same amount of money for the single ticket and more or less the parent saving money on the fees. Because when you buy a single-game ticket online, there is a dollar charge per ticket, where if you buy the 10-game pass, you're buying that pass once, and you only pay that per-ticket fee once. So you're saving $10 there. So that was our ultimate goal with the 10-game pass. And then when we added that game free, was kind of looking at, all right, these three sports have 11 home games. What do we do with that? Do we make them buy a single-game ticket? So we kind of threw in the plus one to kind of incentivize buying it. For the student pass, we were looking at that separately. One of Denny's goals was to drive attendance to more home basketball games for the boys. And the rival games, you get attendance. It's the non-conference weeknight games that attendance isn't so great, it's to kind of generate attendance there to support the teams. And the reason why boys' basketball, it's all the other sports, the kids are already free from the Booster Club.
I think it's creative ideas. I like them. Run the experiments. And the one thing that you know and we know is the ticket sales is a revenue. It's part of the athletic budget. So we'll run some experiments and see, make sure there isn't any unintended consequence. But, you know, there isn't a whole lot not to support. The idea of making it more convenient for parents is great. The idea of helping the students improve attendance is great. George and I were talking about it earlier, and it might be nice, in association with the boosters, to come up with some kind of, you know, special badge that gets you into anything, everything, all the time, and recognizes that, you know, you're a Strongsville Athletic Booster, period. But other than that, let's do it and see how it goes. But great idea. And saving $9 on transaction fees, that's a Mr. Chicken or Chick-fil-A sandwich or a basketball game.
So with that, I brought on a discussion item, this item, or this meeting, and if the board had consensus, bring it back to the next meeting for a vote. But between this meeting and next meeting, we already have athletic events. So it's possible to get this started. So if the board has consensus, either can we get an okay to begin selling them, or if someone wants to make a motion to approve the schedule as is.
I make a motion to approve the athletic event ticket prices 2022 through 2023 school year as presented in the exhibit. Do I have a second?
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion by myself, am I allowed to make a motion?
You can.
Okay, good. Motion by myself, second by Mrs. Hausum. Any, any other discussion? Take your role.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mrs. Hausum?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissel?
Yes.
Mrs. Kelbane?
Yes.
Ms. Stochek?
Yes.
And the motion carries. You have your marching orders, Danny.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Danny. All right, the next item I have for discussion is mainly a board discussion. Just let me find my notes. So this is the annual Ohio School Boards Association Capital Conference Delegate and Alternative Delegate Appointments. We'll have discussion now and at the next meeting, the board will formally appoint a delegate and an alternate. And what that is, is this is an annual item that will be on the agenda as a discussion, discussion item for tonight, and we'll vote next meeting. The board needs to select a delegate and an alternate to represent the district at the annual Ohio School Board Association's Annual Business Meeting. Each member of the Board of Education shall be entitled to appoint one of its members as a delegate to the annual business meeting or called meeting with the power to vote. These appointees comprise the body known as the Ohio School Board Association Delegate Assembly. It must be present to vote. The OSBA Capital Conference is November thirteenth through the fifteenth at the Columbus Convention Center. And the Delegate Assembly is ten and will be scheduled for Monday, November fourteenth at two-thirty. And I believe last year, Mrs. Hausum was our delegate, Mrs. Bissel was the delegate for Polaris, and then prior to that, Richard was a delegate for several years. So I don't know if you, if the three of you want to add more about what you do. I'm not allowed in the room, so I don't know what really happens.
What happens in va- oh, no.
This past year, we didn't really vote on a lot, because some of the items were hot-button topics that got tabled. So in theory, you would vote on, you know, new additions to the school board platform, but we didn't really get to do that, so I guess it just depends.
Yeah, but you do, you do vote on the platform, whatever the platform is, each year. So it's good that we have someone in attendance to represent our interests. I, I will not, I don't have a guaranteed attendance, if I can go, I will go, but I'm not, I'm going to take myself out of the running for delegate or alternate. Do we know right now who plans on attending?
I'm going, but I'm also the alternate for Polaris.
Right. It's a lot, it's a, it would be so much to handle.
Well, in the off chance that-
Right, no, I'm teasing. Do you know if, at this point, whether you're attending?
I thought it's just, isn't it just one person?
Everyone can attend, only, only one person can be the delegate.
Oh, I see.
Meaning, meaning the school district gets one vote-
Okay.
-for any matters that have to be voted on. You're willing to be our delegate?
Okay.
You know what you need to do.
Yep, so we'll have it on the-
Next agenda.
Next agenda, and, and think about if anyone else is going to attend, if they want to be the alternate.
Thanks, George.
So moving on, item B, cafeteria breakfast and prices, and lunch prices. Increase be resolved upon the recommendation of the treasurer that the reimbursable breakfast and lunch offered in the cafeteria program for the two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three school year be priced as listed below. The last time prices were increased were in the two thousand fourteen, fifteen school year. Per last board meeting, we had, I had on the agenda discussion item to increase elementary lunch by twenty-five percent, or twenty-five cents, and secondary lunch by twenty-five cents, and adult lunch by twenty-five cents. And just to kind of give you an idea where that came from, annually going into each school year, we are required to complete a tool called the, a tool called the paid equity, lunch equity, to measure our lunch prices against the USDA target lunch price. The lunch prices are required to be at or above the target lunch price to receive our federal reimbursement. For the upcoming school year, the district will fall below that USDA target lunch price. The lunch price has increased from, the target price has increased from three dollars to three dollars and thirty-one cents for the upcoming school year. So I've asked Donna to run multiple scenarios to run what a ten-cent, twenty-cent, twenty-five-cent increase would look like against the target. A ten, a twenty cents would put us slightly above the target, however, Donna and I are both recommending a twenty-five percent increase, or twenty-five cent increase, which put us about two percent over the target, and give us a little wiggle room for next year as well. As with inflation, I'm sure this, that target's going to increase next year as well. Any questions? And then moving on to item C, cafeteria à la carte prices. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the treasurer that the à la carte prices in the cafeteria program for the twenty-two, for the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three school year be revised. The director of dining services be authorized to adjust the à la carte prices, if necessary during the two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Be further resolved upon the recommendation of the treasurer that director of dining services be authorized to have sales and promotional pricing in the cafeteria school program, which can be found, the à la carte prices can be found in Exhibit B, and any price increases are denoted next to the item by the previous price. And all, there's a handful of items that did increase, which is an increase that resulted due to the, our cost increasing.
Any questions for George? String cheese is fifty cents, cheese cubes are seventy-five cents. Buy string cheese.
And with that, that concludes my report.
Thanks, George. Dr. Reiba, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Miko. George, if you can disconnect from your part. And board members, you'll have the colored sheet with the red, yellows, and greens there. That's what we'll be focused on here.
All right, so if you remember all the way back to March, we had a conversation about developing and growing our athletics program. And my presentation was so inspiring that Jason Kepler applied for our job, right? He told me that, it worked, right, so we hired him. But, you know, that was the first step we said we wanted to do. We wanted to hire and develop a premier athletics staff, starting with some program leadership and administrative support. And Jason's been on board here for a handful of months and done a phenomenal job. The second phase of this was high-quality coaching levels at optimized levels. And so that's what we're going to talk about tonight. Since that meeting, since that kind of introduction to what we wanted to do with athletics, Danny and I sat down and had meetings with all of the high school athletics coaches, as well as all of the middle school athletic coaches, and shared with them a process, a submittal process that they could complete if they felt that their specific sport needed additional coaching help. We gave them about a month to do that. They took a look at their sports, had meaningful discussions with Danny at the time. And what you see on the sheet, and I'll switch over to on the board so everybody can see what we're looking at, is a graphic that represents what happened with those, with those documents. So what you see is the, the top is high school, and it's broken down by fall, winter, and spring sports. Obviously, some activities have two different seasons. And below that black line that's down there, excuse me, let me, is middle school. So let's start with high school, and just kind of get the lay of the land here. So some groups said, hey, we're good with the coaching levels, we're not requesting anything else. When you look under that possession or position or quantity header, that's just going to be in gray. So if you take a look at cross-country at the high school level, cross-country didn't submit any requests at all. So they're saying with the coaching levels we have right now, we feel good, okay? If we go down to football, which is, it's not the greatest green on the screen, but on your sheet and on my screen, it's green. That's green because they have requested an additional assistant coach. That coach position was reduced during our levy, our May two thou, or no, November two thousand eighteen, because of that levy failure, that was a Phase One reduction. So what you can see is, they requested one additional coach. I am recommending that they receive that additional coach, and in the notes section, it tells you why that helps support. So for example, I'm not going to read through all of them, but as you may know, in seventh and eighth grade, we have three football coaches for seventh grade, we have three football coaches for eighth grade. For freshmen for high school, we only have two. And we needed, and as we can see, we talked about earlier with football helmets and pads, our numbers are growing. So for, for coaching, and safety, and management, and positional coaching, we believe that optimizing our levels of support for football would bring back that additional coach. Anytime you see something in green, that means that's what they requested, and that's what I'm recommending that be afforded to that sport. Ninety-nine percent, or about probably ninety percent of these recommendations are to go back to a varsity assistant coach. We had those years ago during a past, and I don't know which one, but those were reduced as a part of a cost-reduction measure. And what that means in typical high school sports, that have freshman JV and varsity levels, you have a freshman coach, a JV coach, a varsity coach, and a varsity assistant. We only have a freshman JV and varsity coach, and then the freshman and JV coach come up and help and are doing double and triple duties at times to help support the varsity program. So that's the green. If we go down to, you can see soccer. Soccer means that they requested something, and I completely denied their request. So soccer, boys did not submit a request. Girls submitted a request for an additional varsity assistant coach. We decided at this time, we have a brand-new girls' coach, let's get a year under our belt to see, and then we can reevaluate, but I'm not recommending that we move forward with a high school assistant for soccer at this time. I would say, I keep on saying I, because I am recommending this to you, but when we talk as a team, it was high school administration, middle school administration, athletic administration, Jenny and George, all had meaningful discussions about each of these in depth. You will see, you could see, dance is the first one. So what that denotes is they requested something, I'm recommending it, and it's in blue, because that would be a completely new supplemental opportunity. As you know, if you've gone to our basketball games, we have a dance team. It's been there for a long time, it's always been a volunteer position. Under the current leadership of that dance team, it's grown, they're competitive. And so I'm recommending that we make that a paid supplemental, and that is there for your consideration. They've also asked for an assistant coach. At this time, I'm saying that we don't agree to that. I'm not recommending that, I think we've got to start with the head, and then go from there and assess on an ongoing basis. Spirit Squad would be a new supplemental. Spirit Squad is for students with disabilities to participate in cheerleading. And so again, that's currently going on, it's a volunteer opportunity. It's something that I think is a great opportunity for our students with disabilities to participate in with same-age peers. And so that's something that, again, they've done the work, they've done, been a volunteer for a while. It's time to recognize that as a supplemental-supported activity in our district. The last color that is there for your consideration is yellow. And what that means is they requested something, and I approved part of it. So if you take a look at baseball, baseball said, hey, we could use one, one and a half, or two additional supplemental contracts. I'm saying, let's start off with one. This would give, again, that varsity assistant coach. Lacrosse, we have boys and girls lacrosse teams, two separate teams, two separate practices. I'm recommending a varsity assistant coach for each of those programs, so that's why you get two. They also requested a goalie coach, to which at this time, I'm not recommending that we add that third coach, which would have been a shared goalie coach. I'm going to pause. Danny, Jason, anything I was incorrect on, or additions you'd like to make? Okay. Any questions on high school before I go to middle school? All right, so for middle school, I'm just going to highlight the changes that are there. So we had a handful of requests for new ideas, new concepts, to help grow either middle school or high school programs. I'm saying no right now. I think we have other ones that I would like to prioritize to get off the ground. So a sixth-grade running club, you can't have sixth-grade sports, right? It's not a sanctioned OHSA sport. Cross-country recommended a running club, there are some, I would defer to my running experts at the table with me, but I do know there's some invitational meets where sixth graders can run. But just with the logistics and busing, and, you know, safety precautions, and the amount of events they could participate, I'm saying, let's wait a little bit on that one and see. Golf at the middle school and softball at the middle school. In terms of, again, logistics, getting kids to the golf course, or having teams to play in the area, just not at this point, we didn't feel that what was, we wanted to focus our attention on that area. Again, great ideas, love the folks for putting that in, but felt we needed to start at the middle school in the four areas that were requested, that we're recommending, that we move forward with. So two of them are bringing back pass reductions. So again, November eighteenth levy pass, or fails, we have Phase One reductions. We reduced an eighth-grade team for volleyball, and an eighth-grade team for both boys' and girls' basketball. Talking to our varsity coach, coaches, and this was a request from the middle school coaches to bring those teams back. Again, we've got to think, my boys are eighth graders going into ninth grade, right? There's some kids that play sports in middle school, and that may be the end of their athletic career in that sport, or completely. So the idea that we have, you know, classes of four-hundred-ish kids, you know, we're pretty close to fifty-fifty boys and girls, you know, two-hundred boys, two-hundred girls. We've got a lot of opportunities for kids that could play to either, maybe they're a little later bloomers, and they develop later, but we're recommending to bring those back and to have those opportunities for the kids to return. The two new opportunities that I would like to start with is cheerleading at the middle school level. If you take a look at our conference, I don't know specifically, but again, of all the middle school events I've been at, it feels like all of the other schools have a middle school cheerleading program. Right now, our SFL partner has been a great partner, and they've done the cheerleading and brought those to the events, but we would look to bring a football and basketball cheerleading to the middle school and make that a middle school sport. It was years ago, I believe, right? You were a middle school cheerleader, right?
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
Should we reinstate the program?
So I think that's something that we should look at instituting new. And the other part, which I'm really excited about, was a proposal from the middle school, is to create an intramurals program. So the reason it's there three times is it's basically, we're looking at doing that supplemental for a fall intramurals program, a winter intramurals program, and then a spring. So that would go throughout the year. Obviously, there's nuances of, you can't do basketball in the winter, because the gyms are already filled. So they would look at different sports and different activities for kids to be involved in. And it's just getting kids involved outside of school, doing things that maybe they're not, you know, I don't want to go all for a school sport, but I just want to be active and with my friends, and have a good time after school. So that's what we're recommending there. So in total, you could see the price tag at the bottom. To implement all of the recommendations for this current year would be a hundred and seven thousand dollars annually. Because of where we're at in this point of the year, fall, the supplementals have been posted, the seasons are getting going, I'm not recommending starting this fall. What I'm recommending, that we would start with the winter season, that all of the sports there, or the intramurals there, would start with the winter season, and then continue on moving forward. Supplemental contracts, as you can see at the bottom, it's got the base salary. They are, all of those percentages are percentages of the base. And so that base, depending on, this is the last year of the teacher's contract, so I can't say to you what the next year's base is going to be, but whatever that base is, it will be just a percentage of that for those supplementals. So any questions or feedback or discussions we can have about this at this time?
The intramurals, is that going to be for sixth, seventh, and eighth grade? And how will we manage that many kids? Is there going to be caps, or?
Yeah, so it's going to depend on, the idea is, yes, it will be for sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. And then depending on the activity or the caps, what it would look like in practice is probably different evenings. You know, whether it's a grade level, or hey, we're going to have these teams, or, you know, if we're going to do Sport X or Ultimate Frisbee or something, we could have multiple teams, and maybe those teams will- teams and maybe those teams will go on different nights. So we're going to try and include as many kids as possible to get them involved, but it's a, it's a, it would be something new, so we'd have to also have the grades to kind of learn as we go and, and develop that and see what works and what doesn't.
The only thing I would suggest is if we do do it by grade level, try to get some type of running in there for the sixth graders, since they have that opportunity in elementary school. It would be sad to see them miss a year and then try to pick back up again in seventh grade. So maybe just keep that in the back of our minds.
Yeah, that's a great suggestion, yeah. Other thoughts or feedback?
I was curious about intramurals too.
I thought that it was, so I think the, the thing that intramurals at the middle school addresses is new opportunities, more opportunities, and so I don't know if there's a way to incorporate that thought process into the high school, but the high school, they all seem to be existing programs and so on. And so we have the time, maybe we can think about, if there, if there isn't a need, there isn't a need. But I think some, some programs at the high school, you know, there, there's kids less athletically inclined that might want to bowl or, or something. So I don't know if that's something we can think about.
Absolutely. So, you know, one of the things, and, you know, I can share it in an update that Denny put into place for us, is some criteria for being a club sport to be viable, right? So we've got men's volleyball, that's a club sport right now that's working. We've tried, have we tried a club for bowling? There's been some interest, right, but it never has come to fruition, is that accurate? So, and then you've got esports that we're starting at the high school that we think in a couple of years is going to be an OHSA sanctioned sport. So I appreciate that comment, Mr. Miko. We'll continue to explore those additional options that, you know, and I guess one of the things for the board members to think about is, right now, Denny, what is it, two years you have to be a club and show that you've got consistent membership? Is it, okay, so two years, but it's all volunteer. So that's the challenge, is people are willing, but everything is volunteer in terms of equipment, resources, you know, travel, all of that to show that you're viable. So if there's something, you know, Denny will get to me, here's all the opportunities that we currently don't offer at Strongsville City Schools. If there's something where you say, hey, we're okay just going for it, and saying, let's start this up and give kids a new opportunity, and, you know, kind of on a year-by-year basis, it's kind of like some of the, our district does pretty well with it, but sometimes tennis and golf and sports like that kind of have a natural progression depending on how many kids come out for the sport. But I'll share the list with you and then we can look at new opportunities. If there's some, you say, hey, let's run the club process, or we just want to try and see if, we think there's the, the group of kids that would like that, let's just go for it. Denny, how long would you need due to scheduling and, and all of that with the league?
If we were doing something like bowling, they generally want to know prior to start of the school year if we're going to have that for winter sports.
And, and I wasn't advocating for bowling, I was just trying to come up with an example of less athletically inclined.
So the idea being, if we're going to add a sport or add something, we would add it sometime this year to go into place next year? Okay.
As far as brass tacks, next steps, when, when do we logically need to start posting for supplementals?
Jenny, for winter sports?
Well, we've already posted the majority of our winter sports, but I believe they start November 1st, they can begin, Denny, is that right?
So verbal basketball is either, they start the last week of October.
Okay.
And November 1st, when everyone starts.
Yeah, so, you know, obviously, we'd want people in place by then and looking at maybe three to four weeks as we post something and get somebody hired.
So it sounds like we can digest this to bring back any questions, considerations, and then shoot for September, October to yea or nay.
Well, what would happen is, what I would suggest is if we, if we come back, everybody can kind of review it and think through it, and if we come back, the way that this officially gets approved, you can do something like you did with George, is approve this as presented. Or if we have consensus, what would happen is you would just see the supplemental contracts on the board agenda and you would approve it that way. So think through the logistics of what you would like to do, whether approve this or just kind of say, hey, Cameron, we have consensus, go forward, and then you'd see an additional, you know, basketball coach on the agenda. Okay?
Any other questions?
The second thing that I wanted to share, George, I don't need the screen anymore if you want to shut it off, thank you, is strategic planning. So one of the, just as a quick piece of history, since the time that I've become superintendent, we've had a strategic plan, we've done it internally. So we've created the three goals that Mr. Miko talks about, you know, achievement and growth, student achievement and growth, financial prudence, and community engagement. Every year during a board retreat, we would sit and look under those goals, what objectives do we want to accomplish, and we'd set those and, and report to the board and our community as, in terms of our progress towards those goals. That plan, it was a, it was a five-year plan, our 2020 plan, ended in 2020, right when COVID was kicking up. So we've still had, we still have strategic actions and plans underneath those goals, but it's been unique to what we've been focused on throughout the past two years with COVID, as well as our instructional focus moving this school year, but again, it's been internal. So it is time, I, I believe strongly in clarity of vision and purpose and strategic planning to give guidance to where we're going as a district. And so what I bring to the board, and I've shared with you in various updates, is that we, we really have two options to consider. One of those options is we continue with the process that I just outlined, that we meet together and administratively and with the board, we share ideas, we share thoughts, we set actions for the upcoming school year, we implement those, we can, you know, go back to a more formal process like we've had where we report to our, our board and our community of, of the work that we're doing. And the other option is that we utilize a consultant to help support us in the work to do the community engagement piece that we haven't done here in the past for our strategic planning work. So what that looks like for a school district is you hire consultant X or, or firm X to come in. Yes, they're going to help you write the strategies and actions and goals and vision statements, but really what you're paying for is the services, is to help engage with the community, and it serves two purposes. First of all, they have the expertise, this is what they do, they have the resources, they have the surveys developed, they have the focus group protocols, but they would reach out and, and cast a wide net of people that would be interested in having a voice of what do we want the future of Strongsville City Schools to be and, and look like. They would run focus groups, they would run surveys, they would compile all of that data, look for themes, and then they would come to us as, as a leadership team and say, based on all the groups that we've talked to, you know, community members, parents, students, administrators, teachers, staff, here's where we think your pillars are, your cornerstones, the things that you should focus on. I'm more of a believer in a three, three-year plan with one-year updates, but here's what we view as your three-year plan and your pillars that you should work towards, and based on what came up here are some action steps that, that you could take based on your overall mission and vision for the school district. So that's a major purpose, and again, resources, expertise, strategic focus on that work. And if you've ever done something in terms of focus group works or survey work, you get a ton of information, quantitative and qualitative data back, and the skill level and the opportunity and the time to go through that in a meaningful way and code it to look at themes is significant. So again, you have a team of people doing that for you. The other thing that it offers for us is the ability to have what I would qualify as unbiased dialogue, right? And what, what I mean by that is if, if we do not go with a consultant, it would be me leading the process. It's not the fact that I don't have the skills to lead the process, it's the fact that as superintendent of the district, when I'm leading a conversation or I am in a room, there can be confirmation bias of people wanting to, what does he want? What does he think? He's the, he's the gentleman leading the district, I want to make sure what I'm saying is, is in line, and that's not what we want, right? We want people to, to share their, their thoughts, their feelings with where we are as a district without having to be concerned about, you know, people that are, are leading or people that are working for the district that are a part of the group. So that is really what I'm going to, I'm going to pause here and leave some time for board discussion, but that's the guidance that I need, is we've got pathway A, which is internal, and I've explained that, we've got pathway B, which is using the consultation services. Again, they're going to help craft it, they're going to make it a nice graphically pleasing document, there'll be publicly facing documents, there'll be internal work documents, there'll be, you know, as many annual checkups as we want to have to go through the work, to update the plan in the out-years, but that's, that's the service that you would look for. And based on the board's consensus, where you would vote to approve this is you would vote to approve that consultant, right? So if you go with option B, the consultant that I would be recommending would come in, speak to the board, go through the details, you'd have a chance to vet and ask questions, and eventually vote if that would be the case, so. Mr. Miko, I turn over to you to lead the discussion.
Who has questions?
Do a lot of other school districts do this? Like, is there like, if we, we, if he did come in and we ask him questions, would he be able to show us work that he's done, like, in an area around here or, you know, I don't...
Yes, so, so the, there's two groups that, that I looked at, and one of them that I'm recommending, and both of those groups have worked with districts across the state as well as locally. So you would be able to not only see the work that they've done with those districts, but contact board members from those districts to be able to say, hey, what was the process like? Was it valuable? Did they deliver on, you know, the expectations? So there is a part of both proposals, there are references that could be checked and, and verified to see if it's worth the expense. Yeah, good question.
So Cameron, you, you and I have had a conversation about it. I'm firmly behind strategic planning, I'm firmly behind the thinking process and, and doing that stuff. I think we're served well by having it internally. I respect everything you said about the unbiased dialogue, et cetera. I'm not as concerned about it. I think people generally are honest with us, whether we're doing it well or whether they think we're doing it poorly, I think we get that information. The other thing that is clear for me is, is we have a similar process with GPD as far as visioning, as far as getting information from the community. So speaking as one board member, I'm, I'm comfortable with continuing to do it internally. I do like, I do like the idea of doing a three-year plan instead of a five-year plan. Does anybody else have something they want to share?
Oh, I have a question in that vein then. Cameron, do you have a sense, like, if you were to facilitate this process, what kind of time commitment and investment from you would it take? And what other things would have to go maybe to the side for that time being if we don't hire externally?
Yeah, so that's a, that's a, that's a question, but I've been wrestling with too, because, you know, I think Mr. Miko's proposing, hey, keep it going with the internal with what we've done, and that's, that's work that I've done, it's a part of my process and, and it's not going to add anything different than is already on the plate with the process that, and the systems we have in place. If, if we feel, okay, we don't want to hire the consultant, but we still want to take on the community engagement piece, that's a significant addition, and I think you all know me well enough that I'm not afraid of a little work, but the idea being, in terms of the multiple focus group opportunities, you know, developing meaningful surveys that's going to get information, and when you're talking about, you know, these type of questions, they're, they're open-ended answers, you know, so the, the analysis of that is going to take a certain amount of time. And so when we talk about what my goals are for the year, the board and I would have to prioritize where is my attention going to be and where is that focus going to be, because that would be a significant focus area for the school year in addition to all the day-to-day stuff that I have to do.
So Richard, are you proposing we go forward with just the internal process that we can do and not seek the community piece?
No, we can, I mean, we can seek the community piece. To me, that's just a matter of determining, I don't look at it as, the way you phrased it, I look at it, look at it as an opportunity cost, you know, what are the other things Cameron could work on? And I, I think having Cameron work on it and determining the level that we want the community piece done, I don't, I think we can look at Dan, I think we could have other resources that can also engage in the community piece. I think it's important, but we're also getting that a community piece in a different flavor from the work the GPD's going to be doing for the visioning work.
Yeah, except they're very focused on one topic, I would, isn't that true? Like, GPD's focusing on future elementary buildings?
Facilities, that's what they're focusing on, but it's going to be an opportunity to have those meetings, to meet with the public, and we'd have to ask them, but I would assume they'd be comfortable asking some general survey-like questions in addition to the focused building questions.
So that's something I'd like to know.
Okay.
Like, how, how much can GPD do for us? I guess the other thing I'm thinking about too, as you're talking about this now, and we are going to be going through this process with GPD this year and out in the community, if we do them simultaneously, is that too much for the public? Like, if we're going to do both? And I can see that being problematic too, because people only have so much time to give, and if they're going to have to choose, I don't know that I want them to choose, because they're both very important, and we haven't done anything like this with the elementary buildings in 50 years. So I guess I need a little bit more information still.
Any other questions, immediate questions or take-it-home, do your homework and follow up with Cameron with other questions, and then we'll determine how we bring it forward.
Yeah, and I would encourage you, that was a good question, Sharon, and I'll put back out there some of the proposals so you could see some of the districts, and either go to their website or contact your colleagues there to see, to hear firsthand from them.
I hear the Sheffield superintendent wants to work in Strongsville.
That's right. I know, right? It's not on a discussion item, but I did just want to share kind of a, a quick debrief from our active threat training yesterday. So if you saw the news, there was some nice coverage by some of the news stations, I, I just want to commend Chief Draves, Chief Fender, Charlie Goss, all of our safety services from here, and, I mean, I think fifteen, sixteen communities that were there yesterday. It was, the, the amount of work that's been happening for months to put this on, and a lot of it, you know, you never saw at the high school because it was about communication with the hospital system and through the, the call center, and Steve Brechner, Eric Castle, and Bill Winkler have put in a ton of hours in collaboration and meeting time to make sure it all worked, and it worked beautifully yesterday. So, you know, just as kind of a debrief, you know, there were scenarios that were enacted yesterday, there were actors that were there, police services and safety services and paramedics and fire, and really, the, the training exercise there yesterday was focused on the safety services. How do our police, fire, EMAS, how do they interact? How do they communicate when they go into an active threat situation? We were there to help support their training, but what a phenomenal learning experience for us. I, I, I don't want to underestimate the difficulty of the experience yesterday. I, I know, you know, Sharon and Laura were both able to be there, and I, I hope we never ever have to experience a, a real event, but that was pretty close to the decisions that you had to make, the actions that you had to have. And so as I've said before in July, when we talked about school safety, we're, we're blessed to be in a city that's got phenomenal services. Tom Clark, who's here, he, he took part in it, he was all over the place, right?
Kind of observed.
Yeah, he, he was there at every angle, and again, that just shows the collaboration between the school district and the city, but that helped us, I, I think Chief said it and it made the news soundbite of, it gives us the opportunity to identify our strengths and work on our weaknesses. I mean, that's what yesterday was about, and I think we all had that learning experience. And, you know, that's one of these things, when we talk about our, our training, it really is about this repetitive training so that in, in a true emergency, and it doesn't even have to be an active threat, right? A tornado comes through, we have a, whatever the threat may be, that, that we have that ability to put our training into place because it's second nature, and for the hundreds of staff and students that were there yesterday that gave up a day to help support and learn, we're eternally grateful. So tough day, a day that I'm glad is, is over, but a good day for our school district and our city to continue to learn and grow and make sure our kids and community are safe.
Thank you for the update. I think it's important that we, we recognize and highlight the work. I think it's important that we recognize and highlight the work. You and I had talked, it's a bit sobering. And, you know, anybody who's reflective about it, you have that tug of war that, you know, it's bad that we have to do this. On the other hand, it's good that we're prepared or preparing, so thank you.
And it was great to see young kids there. We commented how it must have affected them, because, you know, us as kids, I don't think we ever sat through anything like that. So you really have to give it up to the kids that gave a day to do that, because you've got to feel for them, you know?
Any other questions on my report? All right, with that, Steve Brechner is here to share an update for business services. Steve?
Good evening, everyone. One item under business services is an HVAC unit rental. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the Board of Education approves the rental of an HVAC unit from Gardner for Surar Elementary School. This is effective July 27, 2022, until the original purchased unit is received and installed. The cost for the rental unit is $17,417 for the first month and $8,912 for each additional month thereafter, and this agreement is found in Exhibit C.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Hausum, second by Ms. Stovcek, any discussion? While you were reading it, I was thinking, how much, are these exorbitantly expensive to just buy? Where is the break even?
As far as what we purchased as the original unit, I'd have to break down, the project in total is 300 and...
No, I, the unit itself, we're buying it, as I understand it, as a stopgap till the other stuff shows up.
Until the original one's purchased, the one that was ordered in February, yeah.
So, so we're, is this a rental unit that we can continue to use, or is it just they're installing something until the new unit shows up?
This one is going to be installed until the new one shows up.
Yeah, I was thinking it was a portable air conditioner.
It's on wheels, I will tell you.
So how can, how much does it cost to own it? And then the next time we, next time we need to...
Well, it's an undersized unit, we wouldn't want to purchase this one, it will do the job temporarily, but it's an undersized unit, it's the only one that we could find. This one was shipped out of Texas, I believe?
I'm just looking at, I'm looking at $17,000 to bring it in, $9,000 to keep it every, for each additional month.
Why the disparity in the cost of installation and porting it up here?
And we said, and we did say, we did think about just saying it's hot, get used to it.
I did not think about that.
I will forward all the calls to you, Mr. Miko.
That's what my dad said, so...
I grew up that way, too.
Yeah, me too.
I will say, it's our relationship with Gardner that we could even get this unit. This is just the effect of what's going on right now. The unit was purchased and was ordered in February. I have whatever assurances that they can give me that it will not be there long, this rented unit.
That's what I was going to ask, do we have an estimate of how many months?
One.
Oh.
One, but I wanted to, so it would be for January, July 27 till August 27. They're hoping that they can get it in a week after school starts, is their hope, but they didn't want to leave us in the heat. I also didn't want to have to come back every month if this delay continues and keep adding, keep putting it on in front of the board, but that's why I put on for each additional month, it would be $8,000.
So is it already in place?
It's in place right now, as of the 27th, it was put in place. It was just one of those things, it was an emergency, and if, and I can show the records, if we hadn't accepted it noon by the day I found out about this, the unit would have already been gone, because HVAC units completed are just not readily available right now.
I would like to know every month.
All right, I can keep you updated on that.
Yeah, just keep us updated whether, you know, I don't want to find out we're still renting it six months from now. I'd rather find out once a month that we're still renting it six months from now.
I think I got there.
I have no other questions, does anyone else? George, please take the roll.
Mrs. Hausum?
Yes.
Ms. Stovcek?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissell?
Yes.
Ms. Cobain?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes. And the motion carries.
Thank you, Steve. Under student services, we have two items. The first, be resolved upon my recommendation that the board enters into contract with the Educational Service Center of Northeast Ohio for the admission of students with visual audiology and are hearing impaired services for this upcoming school year per Exhibit D. And number two is that the board enters into an agreement with PSI affiliates in the amount of $8,322.30 for speech-language pathologist services to students at St. Joseph and John School for next school year, is found in Exhibit E. And again, these are the funds that come through a special education grant.
What's that?
Restricted for St. Joseph and John's.
Correct, yes, thank you, George, restricted for just that school. And moving on to human resources, I'll turn it over to Jenny for the report for the month. Jenny?
Thank you. Under human resources, I have the following recommendations for your consideration. Under D1, we have abolishments for non-certificated staff. Under D2, resignation for an administrative staff member, resignations for non-certificated staff, resignations for certificated athletic supplemental contracts, and resignations for non-certificated athletic supplemental contract, resignation for a stipend for a teacher-based team coach. Under D3, we have appointments for our administrative staff who you met earlier, appointments for certificated staff, appointments for non-certificated staff, appointments for certificated athletic supplemental contracts, appointments for non-certificated athletic supplemental contracts. Under D4, change in status for a certificated staff member. Under D5, a stipend for our summer professional development that would come out of the general fund for anybody that's certificated through pupil services personnel and participate in these professional development activities or training, and then a stipend for our summer professional development that does fall under our Title II-A grant money improving teacher quality fund, and that is for our certificated instructional personnel. So there's rules with that, that only certain certificated instructional personnel can fall under Title II-A. And under D5, stipends for teacher-based team coaches. And finally, under D6, we have our memorandum of understanding. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the memorandum of understanding between the Strongsville Board of Education and Strongsville Education Association, as stated in the Exhibit F, be accepted. And that concludes my report.
Any questions for the superintendent's report?
Next on our agenda is the consent calendar. Action by the Board of Education and adoption of the consent calendar at this point means anything in the agenda with an asterisk is adopted by a single motion unless requested otherwise. Do I have any otherwise? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Hausum, second by Ms. Stovcek, any discussion? Please take the roll.
Mrs. Hausum?
Yes.
Ms. Stovcek?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissell?
Yes.
Ms. Cobain?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes, and the motion carries. Board of Education, other, I'd like to start, I passed around our draft for board-level strategic goals for the 2022-2023 school year. To get a start... Yes, I'm sorry, if you could take one and pass it down. To just review our board-level strategic goals last year, number one was the passing of the property tax levy or the renewal, and we thank, that is done, it is complete, and we extend another thank you to the voters and the taxpayers for that. Our second goal was the letters training and the science of reading, and we acknowledge that that was a multiple-year goal, but the goal of starting that training for the first year is complete, and it's an ongoing goal. Our third goal was food services, to determine the food services RFP for the year. That goal is complete, and we look forward to continuing our work with Chartwells to feed our students. And then our fourth goal last year was attention to our elementary schools, and we, our tasks were to complete an enrollment study, a community survey, and capacity data for our district's elementary schools. I judge that as complete and ongoing. We did finish the demographic study, we did finish the capacity data, we're going to punt on the community survey, and we'll work on that this year. But I shared with everyone a draft of our, of next year's goals. Number one would be letters and science of reading, and that goal ties into our other goal, our larger goal or our overarching goal of academic achievement and growth, and that would, oh, I noticed a typo, this would be year two of three. But we, the board is committed to implementing letters training. We had, we discussed it quite a bit at our retreat two weeks ago. It is a heavy lift, it is a commitment by the entire district, and we fully intend that it will bear the fruit of taking us to the next level of teaching our students how to read. I think colloquially or anecdotally, you know, nobody's going to say that learning how to read well is not a value, but we're actually putting time, resource, money, energy into it, and we're going to continue that. Our second, our second goal is the cash balance reserve policy. That's something that George brought to our attention, but the goal or the strategic thing to accomplish would be to develop and adopt a cash balance reserve policy. For some of us who have been around the district for a long time, just being in a position to say, hey, should we have a cash balance reserve policy, is something that should make us all sincerely happy. It's different than years before where you could just imagine that. But just like anything, if we give money purpose and direction, I think that's an important thing to do, and because of the support of our, of the voters and our taxpayers, we are in a position that we should think about, and I think it is wise to develop a cash balance reserve policy. That'll be something we'll do in conjunction with the finance committee, but that ties into our goal of financial prudence. And then the third one is the continuing goal of our elementary schools, and our task for the year would be to complete the survey and data gathering in conjunction with the GPD group. They call it visioning, I have to get on board with that phrase, but that is what we want to do, we want to engage ourselves and the community into, you know, what do we think our elementary schools should look like in the future? And that one ties into, honestly, all three of our goals. It ties into academic achievement and growth, it ties into financial prudence, and ultimately it ties into community engagement. I turn it over to my fellow board members, any discussion, any questions? Do we need to think about this deeper, or would someone like to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to accept the 2022-2023 board-level strategic goals as presented by Mr. Miko.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Take the roll.
Mrs. Hausum?
Yes.
Ms. Cobain?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Ms. Stovcek?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissell?
Yes.
And the motion carries. Thank you for everyone's attention, but I think it's important that the community knows what we're concentrating on. And then the other other I had was just to give a shout-out about our new stadium lights. There was a little teaser on Twitter, and I'm sure other places, but I saw it on Twitter, and I suggest everyone in the community come to the opening football game for no other reason than to see the lights dance. But it was, for those who are wondering what the heck I'm talking about, we have the LED lights now at the stadium, which saves us money, and they do a fantastic job, but just like any LED lights, there's a computer attached, and I'm sure if someone played some disco music, you could make the light show work, but they're very, it's very cool, at least for some people. But compliments to our maintenance team, and compliments to wherever Steve ran off to, but it's going to be fun. Anybody else have any others, any other Board of Education? Hearing none, we do have reason for executive session on the topics of?
To consider the employment and compensation of a public employee and to discuss details relative to the security arrangements and emergency response protocols for the Board of Ed.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Hausum, second by Ms. Stovcek, any discussion? Hearing none, please take the roll.
Mrs. Hausum?
Yes.
Ms. Stovcek?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissell?
Yes.
Ms. Cobain?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes, the motion carries. We will enter a new executive session at 8:30. We have no expectation of further business. It would be remiss if we didn't highlight the fact that before we meet again, school will have started. I am, I am excited, I'm excited for the school year. It is a clean chalkboard, there are no Fs, there are no missing homework, there's no dogs that have eaten the homework. Whatever you've done last year, you have a whole new year to apply yourself and do well, and we'll evaluate that statement at our next board meeting.
Are there still chalkboards?
No.
You have a clean whiteboard, a marker-eraser board with all those pretty colors. Thank you for your attention and have a good evening.